Well, they don't seem on their badges that have the first names.
Well, it's a problem because either between my job or my husband.
Let's see if they can hear me.
Pretty much everybody and they know who I am.
Yeah.
So I have to behave myself.
So most of them.
Okay, Ted says he can hear now.
I can hear at least.
All right, we are good.
Okay, public hearing portion, proposed amendments to City Code Drive 1121, 1149, 11510. No one here I assume has any comments and anybody out there? I appear to be so. Okay, we'll move on. Proposal to amend 1021.
And then if they're online, did it say something?
No one's hands are there.
Well, I was gonna have Wayne give a brief summary of where the work session.
Yeah.
I figured people are gonna make a public comment, they they know what they're commenting on.
I don't see anybody online saying that they want.
No, I don't see that either. So 1021, no comments. Item three, propose proposal change title City Development and Construction Standards to City Development and Construction Standards for subdivisions. Okay, item four, proposal to amend portion of City Code titles 4, 9, 10, and 11.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we had to discuss minutes. All right, we did thumbs on the work session, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was figuring. All right, well, then we'll close the public hearing portion and move on to the work session. All right, item five, proposed amendment to City Code Title 1121, 1149, 11510. Wayne, if you could provide us with your summarization of this.
There's a letter that that we wrote that's in your packet as a result of our public hearing that we had. I don't know if it'd be easier to answer questions that you have or to explain those to you. I whatever whatever works.
Maybe just a high level overview of the nature, kind of like you and I talked about.
Okay. The definite the definitions that we're looking to change have the words open space in them. We've had some people who are interpreting those as nouns when they're meant to be adjectives. Describing the area around a home. Some of you are familiar with the term open space as as it is established within a subdivision, an area that's open for for maybe recreation purposes, like a park or just to have an open area that's not encumbered with with homes. We got in a situation where some were looking at a yard, side yard, and that term was included in the definition. Said a side yard is an area da, 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 from the house to the property line. This generally undisturbed and is is left open type thing. Well, that's that's not correct. People put swing sets or people put gardens or whatever else they want to do, whether it's on the side of their house or the back of the house. So it was being used incorrectly. So what this does is just remove the word open space from those definitions and we're just calling it an area, which is already there.
Right.
So that's a change and that's why we're making it because it's being misinterpreted in definitions that are being used improperly, we feel. It's never been interpreted as you can't put anything on the side of your house or the back of your house. It has to be undisturbed and that sort of thing. We never used it in that sense at all.
So we have every, you know, the the definition of open space usually means, well, if it's private, it may it be like HOA type park, but our open space in our city would be any public lands that are open for public use.
Yes.
Because we have public land that is not open for public use, like the water tanks and several other places, but but we can continue with that definition for those public spaces. And if then with development agreements or whatever, we can say your open space is for public use in in the development overall.
Correct, or private use.
Yeah, or private use.
However, they, yes. So and we found that we did have a definition of open space in Title 10, but we don't in Title 11, having to do with subdivision. So we've, I guess there's two options that that we have is to use the same definition in Title 11 that we use in Title 10 for open space or the one that we've proposed. They both say the same thing in different ways, so it really doesn't matter if if we want to have consistency to that definition in both the zoning ordinance Title 10 and the subdivision Title 11. We can do that or we can make them a little bit different, but they say the the same thing and imply the same meaning for open space. So that's that's with open space. Do you want me to go on to the other definitions?
Yeah, I must agree, I have any questions?
I'm just assuming this is this is pounds, right, not pounds?
Is it pounds? I'm sorry, that it's pounds, yeah.
We're good. They know what a pounds was. British money.
Hey, we need a lot of that.
Mine says, well, on on the on our agenda tonight, it does say pound.
Yeah. You probably gave the letter maybe that we wrote and I.
It was the letter that had an issue.
So we had a public hearing. Was there like, is there a reason anyone would object to?
We didn't have any comments on, well, we had a written a written comment.
Yeah.
To not do make these changes, but we had no public comment. Because the individual who objected to it is wants to use those to prevent a neighbor from putting retaining wall on the side of the yard. So now you're disturbing the soil and et cetera, et cetera. So that was the primary objection in the written comment that we thought for.
So how would how would this definition change retain?
It takes out the word open space. So open space is not used anymore. Now we're just defining it as an area. It 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 doesn't have to be open space. A person can put a garden there if they want to. But the way open space is used.
And that's that's consistent with how it's been utilized historically.
Yes.
This is not a departure from anything that we've been doing. It's just.
Our practice is.
Because people are interpreting it differently.
They're thinking open space means like open land with there's no.
Can't touch.
Yes, can't put anything there.
Yeah. When we've never done that, people put up their garden.
I have my whole yard as retaining wells because.
Yeah, I mean, again, it goes back to if we were building down on the flatlands, you might be able to have one definition that works for everywhere, but we've got such different.
We just removed the word, the two words, open space and left the rest of the definition the way it is.
Yeah, okay.
So you're just cleaning it up, basically.
Yeah, yeah. On the Development and Construction Standards, they, when they did the codification, we.
11, 1149.
Okay, let me go in order. What is that one?
Just make sure we're going in order so we conditions for an inch.
Okay.
No, except I think you're talking Adam seven, the changing of the title, right? Is that what you're going?
I just wanted to know which number we're talking to.
That's fine. We go in order 1149. We'll take that one next. Conditions of issuing a building permit. Paragraph A, there's no change to that, but it's part of that, so we've included that. Paragraph B is the one that is we're adding. And it has to do, the city has never had a an ordinance requirement for once a construction is finished, for for whatever changes were made that were approved, for them to give the city what used to be called as-built drawings, now they're called record record documents, which is a more official name for them. In the field, a contractor, they continue to call him as-built, but once, once it goes through the engineer and they're more formalized, then they refer to them as record documents. We've never had a requirement for a developer to provide to us record documents of the changes that they've made to the construction drawings that they've had. And often there are changes. So we're putting in the ordinance then a requirement that once the construction is completed, that the developer has to provide the city, which we retain, record documents documenting all the changes that they may have made during the course of of construction. These are changes that 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 really were required. They weren't optional to them because the way they got in, maybe there was already a a service line that went somewhere and they had to go around it. Those kinds of changes are are what we're referring to as part of the record documents. So and we will retain those here in the city for years as as just kind of how the construction ended up being done.
So it's it's basically the same as that as-built used to be, but now the form, the more correct term is just.
Record documents, correct.
So it's not requiring anything different than what they.
But but we haven't been requiring as-built documents.
Oh, that's that's an important thing.
It is, yes.
I'm a little confused, but hopefully I won't stay that way. Because the letters and emails we've been getting from certain people have been claiming that that's that's one of the bigger parts of their beef is that they the as-built should have been, like, they're demanding that we turn over these records and you're saying that our ordinance has never required them to be submitted? You're talking two different things. Okay, help me understand.
We're talking subdivisions, right?
Correct. If there was a change in house construction. Right, those need to be updated and provided to the city with approval. Go ahead, Corbin.
State code does not allow us to require updated plans on a house. We can't. You don't, I mean, you don't have a choice. You can't require them to update the plans unless it's a requirement of geotech or a geologic engineer. Those are the only two issues that and and that's and and that's talking earthquake. You know, it's you dig the hole and you find a you find a fissure or a a splay, they call. Then you can require plans to be updated. Other than that, you don't get a choice. All you you have to accept amendments to the original document. Now, on a subdivision, and and we have that on 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 the house, on a subdivision, you're talking as-built, the documents where all of the infrastructure is.
Okay, okay.
And and that's critical to know where that is for posterity.
And 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 I might just counsel the council that this is, this has kind of been a a bit of a ongoing bone of contention. Is the difference between the requirements for a subdivision versus the requirements for building a house?
And I don't get the difference still.
Yeah, and 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 it does become a little bit confusing. And so when we're talking about ordinances, it's really important that we differentiate because Summit Creek is a subdivision developer. So they're building multiple, they're they're developing land with the intent to subdivide it and then send it to the county to be platted. That's a subdivision. Whereas when I go and buy a lot and then I build a house, that's a different process. It's completely different.
The subdivisions are a bit.
They're not the same. And that's part of the reason for this next name change is to just emphasize the difference between those two worlds.
Yep.
Because they're not the same.
So Summit Creek plays in both of those worlds, depending on what phase they're in.
They they do play in both of the worlds, but so if they're working on the development, road, street, infrastructure, plating, all of that, they're on Title 11.
Correct.
Correct, but they're in Title 10.
If they're building a house.
Yes.
Right, however, however, and I, again, it's important to be clear here. We haven't always been clear in these areas. So we've got some stuff pretending as a little bit mixed.
On our code?
Sprinkled in our code that.
We do, primarily with the Development and Construction Standards. It pertains to any construction. All right, so if somebody's building a driveway in a home, they have to follow our Development and Construction Standards that happen to be in our sub, part of our subdivision ordinance. But that criteria, they have to follow.
Gotcha. So yeah, it's a little, it's, we would do well, especially as we move forward, to do our best to clarify the differences between those two worlds because, you know, again, I'm gonna hand Summit Creek a document and say, you're developing a subdivision, so this is what you need to follow. Whereas a home builder, we're going to hand them a different book that says this is what you have to follow and we need to have, we need to have the right information in the right place.
Right.
And we don't write that.
Well, and some people traditionally think when they see the word subdivision, they're thinking a whole bunch of homes going in. It says subdivision where subdivision is really just plating that property into buildable lots. And then so there's there's those two different things happening at the same time that, you know, I I'm building, I'm using subdivision codes and do this, whatever, right? And so people sometimes get confused.
There's.
How did we get it?
And let me let me address another topic directly related to that where we're suggesting back when our codes were codified a couple of years ago. There was a portion of the Development and Construction Standards titled Hillside Site Development that a certain group in the city wanted those included in the code itself. They were part of our Development and Construction Standards. And so the city took a part of that and put it in another place as well as left it in the subdivision in in Development and Construction Standards, which is a part of our Title 11 subdivision. So we're suggesting to the council now to remove that from from the Title 11 and and put it back over or leave it where it is. It's it's already there. It just, it causes confusion because it's not in the title code completely. It's only partly there. And we're suggesting, let's take that partly out and just leave it where where it is. And and so this is what happens when when a subdivision is developed, the engineers have to make sure that, for example, if there's thirty-five percent grade on that particular lot, that's a non-buildable area. And that's identified on the subdivision plat that you can't build there because it's over thirty-five percent. And our ordinance says if there's a thirty-five percent slope, it can't be graded, can't be built on. So when we look at a site plan for a home, somebody comes and says, okay, I want to put my home, but I want to, I want to go outside this building envelope a little bit more. It's a big home, but the grade is thirty-five percent over there. We we enforce, we say, I'm sorry, you can't do that. Our ordinances don't allow that. Even though we're past the subdivision stage, now we're looking at site plan review, we'll enforce that subdivision portion of that ordinance on the site plan and don't let them grade or build on that thirty-five percent grade. So they come into play in both places. And if a homeowner wants to do that, we say, I'm sorry, you can't do that. It's against our code. So therein gets the mix a little bit with with being enforced to both as a sub, part of the subdivision ordinance as well as our zoning and land use ordinance in then Title 10.
Where this comes into play is going back to that Omnibusman's Report, they, as I read it, it basically said, it doesn't matter where in your code land use things are, you have to pay attention to all of it. If it's land use, it's land. So.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions on that?
On those.
Changes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Did you have anything else on on these remaining sections?
Like 1021.
Oh.
All those definitions.
Okay, okay.
We're on definitions now.
1021, we've talked, that's the open space in and and the rear having to do with the rear yard and the side yard. Taking the words open space out of those definitions for the purpose intended. The, and we've talked about the City Development and Construction Standards. Then is item four, are your agenda items four with the title codes for eight, nine, 10, and 11? That has to do with the clarification primarily, and we've had, and this comes from our attorney. They've reviewed this and made these recommendations to us to better clarify our zoning enforcement officer and our building official in those codes. And they even developed a new one, I think it's in Title Four of a medical, is it medical officer? Jody, medical? Health, maybe health officer. So which we don't have, but they've clarified that in that in that particular title. If we ever need one, that function is there.
Which previously, if I if I understand correctly, in a lot of these places, it used the term building inspector.
Yes.
Right, naturally.
Yeah.
Which that worked as long as we only had one building inspector. But now that we're contracting the building inspection part out, then Corbett's role really is not as the building inspector. It's he's the building official. And the building inspector is whoever happens to be assigned by that company to do the.
Corbett can still do building inspections, but his term implies or his title implies a much wider wider responsibility. And billing inspector is very narrowly defined.
And and this kind of goes back to what you were saying earlier about, you know, Summit Creek sometimes being the subdivision developer, sometimes being the builder. The way I think about it is all of us have different hats that we wear, but we only wear one hat at an instance. So if I am now acting as a city council member, then I have that hat on. If I'm, you know, working at my work, then I have a different hat on. It's a different function. So we need to think in terms of the functions, not necessarily the person. Because the person may change, whereas the functions hopefully should remain consistent.
So that's the purpose behind those and they, this kind of was done a little bit in conjunction with the appeal authority changes, but this leg behind that, but this again helped clarify the response, better clarify the responsibilities of our of some of our city staff. So, okay, I think.
Before we move on to item nine, which is kind of a shift in a different direction, anybody have any further comments or questions?
Well, that's in the work session, right?
That's what we're in now.
But before we move on to that, any any other comments or questions about the ordinance, the rules, or changes?
Because we're just doing, the paper that Jody gave us, that was five, six, seven, and eight on the work session.
Right, and then we're on it.
And then.
So item nine.
You're still on there, we're nine.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that this is kind of.
Well, and you're on number 10 too, so you might as well just get closer.
Are you?
We're trying to.
Is that a fencing?
Yeah.
Oh, well, it's funny you should ask. All right.
I'm just looking, I'm like looking.
Stay away.
We wanted to come back to you a little bit on item nine. If that's a dead issue, then fine. But our intent in making this, what we thought was a fairly simple change, was to primarily eliminate the five yard or five foot setback on fences with some parameters. That was our intent. As we've looked at that, just so that you know, a little bit further, there's there's some potential other suggested changes that we might suggest to you having to do with the fencing ordinance beyond beyond this. But we don't want, we don't want you to beat a dead horse, the planning commission being the being the dead horse and keep coming back and saying, no, 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 no. If you're done with it, and I understand everybody has their own thoughts and views on fences. If you're done with it, fine, we won't explore it further. But if if you're open to some other changes that likely need to be made, and if if we can work out this other idea that was original purpose in coming to you with eliminating that that five foot setback on yards, we we're willing to pursue it, but if there's a feeling that there's no point in it, then then we're fine and we won't take it any further.
That one house down there, of course, Seasons already has it. That one house down there, Four Seasons already has their fence up, so if we change it.
Now, now Four Seasons is a different, a little bit of different animal. They have their own fencing ordinance down there, and it is different from the city. And they, they are allowed to put it on, on their property line with some restrictions.
We have a resident trying to use that as an example.
Yeah, he knew.
Yeah.
I clarified, well, Doral and I helped with some understanding there. They're no longer using that one.
So I, I think that what would be valuable, just in this instance, to Wayne's point too, is just to get a general kind of ideas to where everyone falls on this. I mean, for example, the, the allowing the utilization of more of the property and not leaving that large or larger corridor, I mean, that was, that was the big issue. So, I mean, is everyone in general agreement that that needs to be addressed? Or is it something that, uh, that alone is enough to, to kill this in, in the council's mind?
I for one would love to see that eliminated. I would too.
I agree.
Okay. And you disagree, Davey, basically?
Yeah, it's nonsense to waste that area between two properties.
Right, between the, the only thing, only concern I have is on those corner lots. That, that was the.
The thirty foot.
Mm-hmm, because of site and I, and also because if we ever have to expand a road or thirty foot, you know, that he's been, a lot of people think their property goes all the way to the street when they're on a side yard or, you know, that it butts a street and they would say, you know, even though we have to approve it, there would be some fighting going on. And I think that it's, there's some things that would happen that I would like, I think we need to be more thoughtful in terms of, um, for that view of site.
Yeah, can I, can I comment briefly on that particular issue? There is a process that many cities follow, where they establish a, a, a triangle at that intersection on four, on four different triangles of that intersection. Depending upon the speed limit, and this goes back to the engineering process, identifies how far that triangle goes out. And that triangle then becomes a safe space where they can't build, they can't put hedges or anything in that triangle, and it's to preserve the view then of a car coming into that intersection to see if there's other cars coming into it. So that could easily be part of our ordinance to put the, a certain distance, depending upon the speed limit of that triangle at that, at, on all four corners, to make that a, a safe space, so to speak, so that there is visibility of cars coming into the intersection.
So you're saying it's, it, there's some sort of formula that's put into place, so it would not necessarily be the same on every intersection, depending on what the topography was, depending on how the road slopes, or if there's a turn or whatever, all at the speed limit, all of that would be in consideration.
Yeah, primarily it's a speed limit, okay? But if you've got a hill, then sure, then.
I, I can see several spots that people come around and, and they all of a sudden.
Both.
I've got both.
She's got, she's got speed.
And how many people have gone off that hill, and now there's a house right there, and I kind of, I'm kind of hmm. I'm hoping they keep that, I'm hoping we let them keep that berm that they have up there, because there's enough people that have just come right off that side of that hill. But yeah, that's the kinds of things that I would think of in terms of, um, you know, a, a safe site distance.
Yeah.
Would be those, all of those things would have to be considered. I, I, I'm, I'm on, I'm on board with that.
I would love to see also the setback off of street to be phrased off of edge of asphalt.
Usually be right of way.
Yeah, edge of right of way.
But whatever.
Cause that's the city's right of way, so it, it even extends a little bit further.
If we have right of way, right, is the right of way typically a standard?
Yes.
It is, in our city, yes.
So I would say if we can, just for the sake of ease for residents, if we can just say off of edge of asphalt, anybody and their dog can go out there and measure off the edge of asphalt. So if it's, if the city right of way is ten feet, twelve feet, whatever it is.
Fifty-six feet.
Fifty-six feet.
That's open. The problem we have been is some of our roads are not built on the road, actual road. Some of them are built in the middle of.
Right, and that's what I'm willing to help create a consistency of. Because there is, there is some issues per our previous conversations, right?
When a subdivision is developed, that right of way is identified in that, in that plat, on that.
So we have variable right of ways throughout the city?
No.
No.
Well, then wait a minute, wait a minute, because yes, we actually do, if we're using your definition. So the road is not always built dead center in the middle of the right of way. Okay? In fact, Woodland Hills Drive is a perfect example of being terribly.
I, I completely.
My road keeps working its way over into my yard.
Yeah, and so you've got, so you cannot go based on asphalt, at all.
Can't be losing more property.
You really have to identify where's the right of way. Now, my biggest problem with the fencing ordinance is how I can foresee that it would fundamentally change the look of Woodland Hills. Huge change. Because.
We already have it.
You do know what the current ordinance is, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Cause anyone can still put the fence up.
They can put the fence.
I don't think a lot of people could have started fences just as we put this.
But you, you, you want, I think you.
I disagree, I think they will.
You want to preserve the front of the, the property.
Well.
So you restrict, you restrict fences coming forward of, for example, the plane, the front plane of a home.
I understand what you're saying, Wayne, but keep in mind where I live.
I know.
You know, in my neck of the woods, my, my area, I only have three backyards. You know, that I'm, that I'm looking at. And so anyway.
There'd be fences up against those with you.
And, and that's not what I want. So I'm against the, they currently can't do that, right?
Yeah.
Have to be five foot.
With a five foot gap.
Yeah.
So they can still put that fence, just five feet from the back, which is you to me.
Yeah, they can still do it if they want.
I'm just not in favor of, I wasn't in favor of that for what it's worth. That helps me, that makes more sense too. So I'm, I, it's not about the five foot to me, it's about the fence. I'm, I, I just, we'd rather not have fences up here.
Okay, there.
You go sever.
Oh, Sever, okay, yeah.
It's called a site, site triangle.
I think one of the things.
Jody, how do you?
You should.
He's good, yeah.
Unroot yourself.
I'm unrooting myself, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, one of the things I think you need to remember, Dave especially, from what your comments are, right now, the way the fencing ordinance reads, they can put a fence around their property. Now, it has to be seventy-five percent open. It can't be a closed fence, it can't be a visual barrier fence, like we've allowed down in Four Seasons. But right now, the way the fencing ordinance reads, they can put a fence around their property.
I understand, and as I just mentioned Sever, and I'm against that one too. I, I just don't want fences in Woodland Hills. Because, um, I look at the way Woodland Hills looks today, and then I remember what Orem looked like when I had fences everywhere, and I, I don't like that look, and I like this.
But what I'm saying, Dave, is that then you're gonna have to change the fencing ordinance, because the way it reads, they can put it up now.
Right.
And the point is they haven't.
Yeah, the point of it, mostly probably not.
All right, well, I, I, I really, this exercise was mostly about, I, I, I think that there was some frustration um, that, you know, we would say we want to amend the fencing ordinance, and then the planning commission would come back with some amendments, and then we would send it back, and then it'd come back and forth. So I, 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 I think that there needs to be some sense of finality to this. So I think that what was hoped for, and, and Wayne, I hope that you feel like you've gotten the direction that, that you're looking for. But I think that this needs to be the, the final effort, and if it passes, it passes, and if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Okay.
I think.
And I would take it step by step. We won't come back to you with all these changes that need to be made. Let's, let's take a step at a time and go forward and see if we have consensus or not with, with what wants to be done. And I can understand Dave's position and, you know, it.
And I can understand the need for people who, who truly do want to fence for whatever reason, just making sure that we're consistent. That I'm okay with it being on the property line, because that five feet is, is a waste of, of space in terms of, I know they have, we had it on there for a wildlife corridor. Um, we know wildlife can pretty well jump over anything. And, um, that, that front plane is important to me because it maintains that level of consistency throughout the city that we're looking for. Mindly concerned with, then now I know it's called a site triangle, and if we can work that in, I would really greatly appreciate that.
Okay, we'll come back with something along those lines and.
Okay.
Oh, Severn has a question.
Yeah, Severn?
Uh, just for Carrie's, um, information. The front plate on the house, the restriction on the front plate of the house exists only in Four Seasons. There is nothing that says you can't have a fence beyond the front plate of the house in the rest of Woodland Hills.
Right, and well, and I, I think that we should include that.
That's what would be added.
That's what I think, that's why I'm telling him, I would like that to be added for, for our ordinance to go just to the front plane of the house.
See, I don't like the, the term front plane of the house anywhere in our ordinance because you don't know what the front is in a lot of homes.
Well, I think that would have to be fine.
Where you don't know.
I think we could put a definition.
Put some diagrams.
Because, because you're, you're right, some people, especially corner lots, might have the front facing a different direction than where the driveway comes in.
Well, some people, their house was weird for the view.
Mm-hmm, and so wherever it is according to their street address, I would assume would be the front plane of their house.
That's kind of the way we look at it.
You know, that's wherever your driveway and that makes your, an address, the way it is, that's your front plane, because that's what's facing the street.
Yeah. And this feels.
But, but that's not true, Carrie.
We'll give it one more shot, come back and, you know, we can modify what we do or turn it all down or whatever, but we'll give it another shot.
Yeah, I understand Severn, I understand what you're saying, because front plane is usually where the front door is, but that's not necessarily in this site plan arrangement.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, item ten.
You're still up here.
They're, they're.
It says, it says chairman, and councilman front.
I think Wayne's earned a, a rest.
Beyond David for a while.
Well, so we've had, um, two very productive meetings with Summit Creek and, um, I will just say that anytime you're, uh, negotiating a contract, it's hard work, uh, really, really hard work. And, um, you kind of have to go into it realizing that you're not going to get everything you want, and they're not going to get everything they want. And somewhere in that middle is the right spot. Um, I feel like we're a lot closer to that right spot now than we were before. Um, some of the bigger issues that, um, kind of the, the big rocks that we uh, were able to address was, um, one was easement access up to some three hundred acres. And it was decided that that's a future thing anyway, so we just removed that from this development agreement altogether. So there, there's gonna be no easement. Another one of the big contentions was, um, the, uh, access to trails. And, um, Summit Creek is in kind of an interesting position because their trails aren't really theirs anymore. They're, uh, the HOAs, and the HOA is reluctant because of some concerns they have over potential litigation to just open them up to the public and maintenance and so forth. Uh, so that was one where we kind of had to go, hmm, well, what's the real goal? And the real goal is just to increase the number of, uh, walking trails and so forth within the city. So Summit Creek has actually offered to, um, allow residents to use both. They, they didn't really allow this, but the city has some property up above the water tanks, and then they have some property, and we would be able to build a trail across that. So it's just a different place for the, um, for the trail access. Trying to think of.
So let's talk about that first. So, so you're saying that, uh, trading some of, some of the property above to be to be part of a new trail system?
And Summit Creek is willing to, uh, donate five hundred dollars per lot that is sold out of the new subdivision, which we figured would amount to roughly forty thousand dollars.
Over time, sorry.
Over time, but they're willing to, um, initially give us kind of a, an advance on that money. Uh, ten thousand dollars so that we can build a tr- a trail system.
That would go from where to where? Where we see.
Well, essentially up above the water tank. I'm gonna just say it that way because we don't know.
Okay, that, because I'm sitting there thinking that steep part where.
So they're asking, they, they've asked me like with, uh, with parks and trails to get the plaques and identify easements and city property places where we could put trails. So, um, that's what we're gonna do.
So yeah, it.
On city property.
City property or, or easement, yeah.
Or, or an easement with Summit Creek.
Or an easement with Summit.
Okay, cause we, and we also have to remember what we're looking at, that then only certain lots have trail easements on them. Others, uh, if you have an easement for utilities, that does not equal trail easement.
Yeah, yeah.
So just to be clear about that, and then also.
So is that pretty clearly, uh?
The limited on plaques.
So.
The other thing is.
Rather than get bogged down in this, I agree, it's a really good discussion. But it's a discussion that really needs to come when they actually have some trail ideas and they can say, you know.
I'm just, for those who may listen to this afterwards, as we have residents where the general plan has shown a trail through their property where there is not a trail easement. So I get calls quite a bit from residents who are, have been upset by that.
Wayne and I talked about that, part of this is true.
Uh-huh, part of that then is to assure them that we are not trying to have eminent domain for a trail through the backyard. And that we'll only go forward with those properties that have current trail easements, or we may even purchase a trail easement.
Yeah, and also, all of that process would definitely have to.
Right, exactly, just, and while you're looking at the minutes.
Yeah, and I, I actually discussed it with Wayne today, this morning, that because I had some of those same residents express concern to me when we were running. And, and so I told him that if we could adjust the general plan and move some of those that are on there, that that would be something that we'll get to while we're doing this.
It would be helpful, and then those who have trail easements that may bought their property or later, and might not know that they have a trail, that gives them a heads up.
Yeah.
Right, in addition, um, if we're looking at city property, just to remind you that we do have some mitigation happening on some city property, so make sure you coordinate that with Corbett so that we don't accidentally design something into.
All I'm gonna do is call the plaques, identify the property, and then we'll meet with everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Corbett.
Okay, all right, thank you. So anyway, back to the development agreement. But as I said, I think that's a very important discussion to have. And, and it is ancillary to the development agreement, the development agreement had to come first. So anyway, um, I'm trying to think of any of the other big rocks that we kind of worked through. One of the bigger ones for Summit Creek was just, okay, now that we vacated those roads, what exactly was the work that needed to be done? And so we had to identify which lots were actually, we needed to do the rock line ditches and so forth. And so, um, I believe we've done that. One thing I want to mention on that is as part of the development agreement, we did agree that the city, if a lot has not had a building permit issued, then when we issue building permit, we will, um, prorate, um, some portion of charges for the improvements that are being done in that subdivision. But the trigger, and it's really critical that we understand this, the trigger is the building permit. Because that's the only time the city really can collect money from someone. And so if they've already got a building permit, then Summit Creek's just gonna have to do that work without any, any reimbursement. If they don't have a building permit, the building permit happens after we have some idea of the, of the prorated cost. Then that's when we'll add that to their building permit and then reimburse Summit Creek for that portion of the cost. So from an administrative point of view, then.
So from an administrative point of view, then do we have this all worked out or is this something that needs to be?
We're gonna amend the fee schedule, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're talking about reimbursing for subdivision improvements?
Yes.
But subdivision improvements are the responsibility of the developer.
That is true.
So why is the homeowner reimbursing the developer for what they're responsible for anyways?
Um, and.
And they're be collecting it because that would be done through an S I D.
Through a special improvement district. Um, okay, we didn't pass this through the lawyers, so that's still to be done.
There's wording in there that says that we are legally able to do it.
Yeah, so it's. Anyway.
Well, I mean, but I I think that's great progress, but yeah, so that might need to be higher now.
Anyway, so that's the idea. Um. So with the um, the agreement is, where it stands right now is we've um Summit Creek has it. They're giving it to their lawyer, their lawyer is going to finalize what they believe the wording is going to be, we will then pass it to our lawyers, they will look at it, and then after that, it will come to us. Uh, well, it'll come to the planning commission, and then after the planning commission, it'll come to us. So that's that's kind of the process. We're hoping that we can get this done.
Excellent, and then thank you for your guys.
Yeah.
Uh, efforts.
Thank you.
Everything. Wayne, did you have something?
We want to uh, we want to give, as soon as it clears the lawyers, we want to give the heads-up copy to the to the council. So if they've got it in advance of our public hearing, uh, if they have questions before it actually comes to the public hearing, maybe we could address those or concerns that they have. Uh, so just to facilitate moving things forward. So I just want to let the council know that that we'll as soon as it clears the lawyers, we'll get a copy to them for them to look at, review, digest.
Great, thank you. All right, thanks David, any other comments or questions? Okay. Item eleven, February and March twenty twenty two financials.
Can you get our um questions answered?
I'm assuming that's what this is.
This is that answer.
This is Chris.
Chris?
Yes, and so I do have the questions answered, we have the new budget for twenty twenty two ready to go, the mayor and I are meeting on that in the next couple of days to go over it. Um, I do have the email ready to send back to you on the questions, or excuse me, the answers to your questions. But I was hoping to send it at the same time as the budget, so um it it'll make more sense.
Yeah, and and Chris is, I I I've had a number of things, Chris has been talking to me about getting the 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 budget review, but it's, I haven't shut it off, so if you wanna if you wanna throw stones, you can throw them at me.
Well, we can throw them at Chris, but it breaks the TV.
Right, yeah, no, don't break that TV.
Throw away, throw away.
All right, so we'll we'll table that again, um, and that would be item twelve two, I would say.
And also table that one?
Yeah, so we'll all budgetary items, we'll. Okay, item thirteen, uh, council member Hillary, uh, can I get your report?
Uh, yes, so the nine one one service district, uh, we we haven't met, and I'm actually, we're gonna, I'm gonna be passing that assignment over to Doro, which will be voting on, and then I've taken on sewer and kind of in that place. Uh, Corbett and I have been working, mostly Corbett though, because he's our fearless leader on all liquid waste, right, Corbett?
What'd you say?
But we've been working on looking at what we can do there, uh, to pull potentially maintenance and cleaning of the the sewer to us. Um, this potentially could increase revenue um for us, because that's the exit of the gray. Um, and also keep rates good for our residents, because if we don't, then most likely Jason would just need to drastically raise our rates for those connected to sewer. So we're working, well, Corbett's working very hardly and hard hard on that. Very hardly, yeah.
Comes out.
Depends on the day, the climate, no, and then um the Utah Valley Solid Waste District, I was actually on the I'm the alternate for the the Numa Board. Um, Numa is, or New Era, sorry, the New Era Board, and that is our dump site, so the old bay view is now New Era. Um, and so they just, we just passed a bond, so they're getting a one point two million dollar bond, we do some renovations for staffing needs and also increasing funds to offset um some of the inflation costs that they're having, um, they projected that out into the future and that is looking quite good. Um, so our rate should not be going up as they promised, so that is good, and then I've got a board meeting with um S U B S W D um on Thursday.
And it would be groundbreaking, so that was a big deal.
Yeah, and then I completely spaced being there, I was so mad, but yes, we broke ground on the new transfer station, which is gonna be a huge game changer. I believe eighteen votes. It's a big, big, big facility.
Yeah.
It's gonna be amazing.
All right, very good, thank you. Okay, uh, council member Casey.
All right, we have been busy, there's a lot going on. The Fire EMS Expo is May twenty first, the Saturday, ten to one. We look forward to that, we've got a lot of plan. Uh, kids, get your kids here because uh we'll land a helicopter and bring them up here and and the bomb dog demonstration, there's all kinds of things.
Free lunch, don't forget free lunch.
No, yeah, so uh we we're busy planning that. Um, the C W P P, uh, I need to tell you a little story. Um, we were one of the early adopters of this, of this community, of the Community Wildland Protect Protection Program. And with that program came our chipping, and we've carried that chipping program forward several years now, and it's gained nationwide attention, what we're doing in our city as far as wildland urban interface planning and 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 execution, so um Craig has some um some contacts and it's turned out that there is a a nationwide meeting being held in Colorado here the first week of June that we were one of two cities from Utah invited to attend, all expenses paid, and so Craig's asked me to go visiting and we're going to go there, and it is an amazing deal. Um, they uh, the other city, remember, we're Willlin Hills, the other city is Provo, so 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 we're really honored with with that opportunity, we had a a phone call today with the group of attendees that that were were planning this. Uh, we're to create a video showing the highlights of our city. So we're planning that, we're gonna cover a little bit in this video, the expo, the brush piles in existence around the city are going to be a big hit because they'll just show, if you haven't been up to the park and seen what our crew has done. We've got some brush, uh, that we're gonna share pictures and video of that with this group. Um, we're gonna highlight our department members, the volunteers that they are, and we're gonna also highlight our our excellent fire equipment for a community of our size that we have. So we'll we'll make a a nice video for that to to share with them. But what what the plan is is.
Can you show, share that video with all of us once you're done?
Yes, yes.
There are other people who.
Yeah.
It would be nice for us to be able to share, like when I go to my emergency management meetings or some of those other things, it'd be nice to.
We figured it'd be high caliber. Or, you know, I think good quality, and so, yeah, I I would love to share that. Um. The the goal of attending this type of meeting is to is to help other cities on one side, but also to gain um, we'll become alumni of this F B X group, they're called. And and we will, we'll come back with a better plan and and ideas from other cities to to improve on our plans for our own city as far as uh keeping this place from burning down.
Will it help us with future grants, saying that we will present her at this conference?
Well, yeah, just just the participation in this um is something we're really thrilled about. Uh, like I said, you you don't get to go to this type of thing without without a lot of work on on Craig's part, to be honest, with you to to get to do it. Um, so then I'm all capable about because of C W P P and and our our citizens, we have big meetings in this culture right here and and it went on and on and and we came up with a really good plan and and we moved forward from that day and and that's pretty, very successful, I think, in the process. So I'm really proud of our citizens right now for the brush piles we're seeing around the city. Uh, we still plan on Utah County chipping those piles, but a lot of the times they get busy fighting a fire somewhere, then it's turned over to our department and we will chip those piles, and if you haven't done, if you haven't run a chipper, it's killer work.
It's hard.
It was really a workout, so, but William, Craig's taking responsibility for that.
And we have definitely told everyone that once it goes by your street, it's done, no, we're not coming back around.
Yeah. So uh, so we're just proud of the cities, the citizens' uh participation in removal of brush every time we offer the the chipping thing, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, council member one.
Hey, so um, South Valley Animal Shelter, we have our licensing click this Saturday, it will be here at city center.
Can you send me that email again? For some reason, I cannot find that in my email.
It's on the city website.
Yeah, because I wanted to post it on social media.
I didn't mind it on either, I think Jody has it.
Yeah, I searched everywhere and I can't find where it came from.
Because I don't have this in my email either. Um, it's this Saturday from ten to twelve, you're supposed to sign up online, um. They told me that whenever it's at Willlin Hills, it'll be very good turnout, that we get a lot when it's in Elbridge, but for some reason, we have it here. Not very many people.
The company wants to say that their dog isn't licensed because they're keeping him at home, that's one of those.
I know, I said maybe, maybe we have a little bit of rebellious spirit up here.
Why do you care if my dog has a license, it's on.
Right, so Doro's gonna, and he's been volunteered to come and make sure that the bay is cleared out.
We'll give you room, yeah.
I'm always calling on Doro to help me with those things, but anyway, so he'll be here to help me do that and um we'll get set up in there. Um, so hopefully we'll get some people, they they'll microchip them and everything, you can do it. Um, they just did their new budget and our amount only went up like four hundred dollars. Some of the cities like Provo City went up almost thirty grand. So I'm grateful for.
Makes some calculation.
Yeah, and how much use and how much use them, so that she did a whole calculation with percentages, and ours was really, really small, and I was grateful for that. Um, just the other thing, just kind of a note item is that Utah County actually just raided a breeder quarterer and they rescued sixty eight dogs. And so they're all.
Yeah, that's amazing, spent pork.
And they're all at the shelter, um, and they're being, they have to keep them because it's a pending court case, and so they're evidence. And so they have all these dogs, and you can, it hits you, because we had a meeting last week, like when you walk in the door, the smell is extra strong, um, but they have Cavaliers, Goldens, and Corkies that are pure breeds that will be being sold for a hundred bucks, they will be sprayed at nater, but um, if you always dream of wanting one of those, keep checking the website because they're gonna be released uh as soon as they do.
Wow, but we don't know when that will be.
No, if you really want one, I have plenty of dogs already, so I'm good. Um, and then just um for P T R, we haven't met, so and I know it's not on the agenda, but I just wanted to say we did have um a citizen who came forward and volunteered to help write grants if we can um identify a good grant, so we're excited for that.
Great, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I need to point out that the one online has council member Malkovich on it, but this one, it's printed.
No, I know, I was gonna uh invite Carrie to speak, I was just waiting to do it alphabetically, but.
Yeah, that's fine.
As a, all right, well, council member Malkovich.
All right, um, Utah Lake, um, kind of been a little bit, we've done some steps with the technical committee and steering committee on uh, which is the science panel, getting ready for a lot of things that are happening uh with studies. Um, of course, algae blooms are always a consideration, every freshwater lake in the state has algae blooms, we just hear about Utah Lake more. Not that they're any bigger than any other lake, it's just that now they're more noticeable. But um there is treatments going on, there's several several different companies that are doing treatments on the lake um as those come up. Um, there are um some increase in um accessibility, the the life jacket program is in full force, Willlin Hills participated in that. Do you have um any life jackets that you'd like to donate or money to to keep those updated? And they're at every access point, so if somebody comes and says, oh, I'm gonna paddleboard, they can get a life jacket, because a lot of the people who are, they're finding are the ones that are in small fishing boats or on paddleboards and they get out just enough offshore and then that wind kicks up. And so they're trying, they're hoping that people will utilize this life jacket program. Uh, we're going on a tour, I think it's next week, of the Provo River Delta Project. Um, but mostly it's it's the studies right now, there's always hundreds of studies from universities all over the place because it's one of the best ecosystems in the nation um for studying plants and and wildlife and fish, the migratory bird option, you know, the there is some stuff that's going on because Provo just opened up their new airport and expansion, which is very exciting, but migratory birds and airplanes don't go well together, so they're trying, they've been trying for a while to get those to move to another location rather than Provo Bay. So that's an ongoing issue on what they do to keep those birds away from the the runways. So those are two, that's kind of Utah Lake, um, I wanted you to know that prior to, well, in the winter of twenty twenty, um there was a lot of plans for celebration of of the of women getting the right to vote in nineteen twenty to twenty twenty, and there was this whole statewide campaign. And every city was supposed to participate, so we signed up to participate. Well, then COVID happened and we weren't able to participate, nobody was able to. And so they got back with me um recently and said, we're doing this traveling exhibit and we would like Willlin Hills to have a chance, some people are hosting it in their libraries or wherever. Um, just to showcase that we were the first woman, we had the first woman vote in our in the nation, we had the very first woman state senator. We had um all these other firsts for some strong women in in Utah today, this whole exhibit. So I chose um that we will start next Wednesday in our city center somewhere here that we will.
Put it in a library?
That we will. So we're gonna put it somewhere in this section, Jody and I will determine that because we want it to be here so that when people come to Expo, they can also take a look at it, and also those, for those of you who don't know, there are six artists in town who are having an artist tour the nineteen twenty and twenty first, they want us to kind of piggyback with them, so they're going to advertise it on their coasters and their stuff. So if people go around, um, they're gonna have, they're hoping to have a food truck at the park, but then also advertise that ours, it's gonna be here, people want to stop, they can see it, and then it will continue to the day after comes our next council week, so if anyone wants to come, it will be available and, you know, they might want to bring their achievement day girls or.
Jack Kurt Richards' piece is the one that organized that.
Yes, he he has done it for years for his own personal tour, but he has now expanded to have it for six of the artists who live in our community, I think it's gonna be a great event, so I just wanted you to know that we've added that Better Days exhibit, from Better Days twenty twenty, and it will be here at city center.
Sweet.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member Brad.
So we have not met, we have a meeting scheduled, it was gonna be in two days on Thursday, but now it's moved to two weeks from now, so.
Okay. All right, and uh, as for me, uh, the MAGC meetings were canceled again this month. Um, just briefly. Just briefly, I I did go to um Corvallis, Oregon.
Corvallis.
Corvallis. I'll leave it to the Oregonian to correct me. Is Oregonian right?
Yeah, that's correct. It's Corvallis.
Okay, well, I just saw it on a map. All right, so anyway.
Although it's Oregon State, so I don't care.
Well, it's, I I I know people that are from out of state and they'll refer to what I've always called Alta as Alta.
Oh, boy.
Hurricane, is it Hurricane?
All right, but anyway. Corvallis uh is uh the uh headquarters of um New Scale, which is a uh. Uh a company that is developing small nuclear reactors, so. Uh SESD buys its power from an organization called UAMs. UAMs sent. Uh a number of the SESD directors to tour this facility. Um and it was, it was fascinating that I I like I mentioned, uh I I think that uh it's it's very exciting, the prospect of of. Nuclear energy, I mean, it's 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 and it's uh kind of the new darling of even the green movement. Um but and and that one is expected to go live and one of them they're really gonna, I don't know, is expected to go live in twenty twenty nine.
Takes forever to build and that's the, they've been looking at that for quite a long time and the people's like, well, I'm trying to work in Utah cuz this is gonna be so far down the road. But I think they're looking closer at it now.
Yeah, well, and and that is actually my my favorite point is that I was at the SESD meeting today and uh. And the energy market is very challenging right now. And uh you know, they're they're having to buy uh some of this sort of premium priced energy just because. Some of the resources are either they've been mopped all or, you know, Glen Canyon Dam is drying.
Doesn't have any water.
Yeah, so I mean. Well, I hope they succeed cuz you know, they it presents some some real challenges, especially when you consider, you know, some of the gaps between these. Current resource systems go offline and then even this nuclear facility, I mean, even if they get it done in twenty twenty nine. But the I I do think that, you know, it would be. Important for us as residents, you know, they're showing some of the the numbers in terms of energy costs. I mean, July, obviously, a lot of electricity is used.
They should let one of us have solar then.
Yeah, have you ever find out why why SESD isn't letting our citizens have it?
From what I understand, there is no.
They say they are on your side, but the citizen calls, they're not letting.
Yeah, they they've got a warranty.
They said there's a warranty and not letting them, so there's a disconnect somewhere in SESD.
Well, I I I would, I I I can't speculate as to why that would be the case other than, I mean, cuz uh you know, the the. The resource issue is something that they're looking very closely at, so it it might be that it's a strain on other aspects of the infrastructure. I'm just guessing, I have no idea, but but there may be a reason that has, I mean, it's, I I I don't. Believe that it would be related to them trying to kind of corner the energy market. I I would imagine it would be more.
Cuz they're not gonna make as much money.
Yeah, they don't make, they don't make anything off of it, actually.
It's actually, that is the biggest freaking lie I've ever heard.
Think so?
Because I pay twenty six dollars to SESD. Every month that has nothing to do with my power, has everything to do with infrastructure, so they divided the billing though. Because I do have solar.
So do I.
And so you pay the same thing.
That I get two bills.
Yeah, I get two bills. One is for the actual energy use in my home and the other is for infrastructure. So please don't buy into their whining about not making any money. Because they've now separated it out, so they get money.
They get some money, but but isn't a part of it, though, that I've heard from them was about the buying power to put on the grid or something like that, that really. Is a problem for them.
Yeah, I know, and that's, again.
It's all state, sorry.
There's so much FUD around this because, again, when you actually get into it, yeah, there's. There's some cost to buying the power and the power fluctuates in price, but that's, I mean, you you and I experience the same thing when we go to the gas pump. Right? So I don't know what the issue is.
Well, I, the only reason I bring it up is just because with diminished resources, I mean, there there could be a spike. And that was addressed in the meeting today, that, you know, I think that the the general consensus is going to be that, like. Gasoline, you know, like like everything else, I mean, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna see a spike, but I I I did think it was. At least something to be mindful of and and I don't know if there's something, you know.
I'll tell you.
I guess if you warn everybody, then it just, maybe it helps, but maybe it also just makes people mad longer, maybe it's better to just. Take it uh as a singular item.
The much figure threat to SESD is South Utah County development.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. They're they're literally worried because.
The growth is going to shrink their service.
Their customer service base.
Dramatically.
Well.
And if they're not planning for that. They will fail. And they'll fail pretty quickly.
Uh now, so I, I mean, I, this is not really the forum to talk about SESD management, but I mean, I I uh. I mean, I'm happy to relay your concerns to them.
Yeah, I mean, they they. So whether they had lost the lawsuit or not, which I predicted two years ago they would lose. The fact of the matter is, the reason SESD existed was because they were a rural electric electric district.
Right.
When you switch from rural to urban. And you have cities like Salem and Payson and Spanish Fork who deliver their own electricity. And they keep annexing more and more and more and more land.
Right.
SESD was always destined to shrink. And if they're not thinking about that, if they're not planning for that. Then they need to be. That's their bigger threat.
Right, no, I mean, I I that that's no surprise that you've got cities that have taken power in house and that that's, I mean, that's what some of the lawsuits were about, that's what, you know, there's.
Well, and and we should, we should, I'm not saying do it right away, but we should be thinking.
We should be thinking, actually, yes, I agree.
Okay, but here's the thing, is you have to pay for the infrastructure. I mean, you have to buy it from SESD, we don't just get a super troll.
Here's the, here's the dirty little secret. We already do.
We do.
When the developers.
But what I'm saying is like, it is significant investment for us to assume ownership of, you would have to buy.
I I I understand, but that's that's kind of the weirdness.
And maintain it.
When when we get a subdivision built, the developer puts that infrastructure in. Because as SESD requires, they don't pay for that. They don't put that infrastructure in, the developer does. And then he gives it to SESD. So then we're going to end up buying buying something from SESD that they never paid for in the first place. Now, is that true of the transformers and the the substations? No. That's where it, they do actually pay for that, but the reality is all the wire to go through these streets, SESD never paid for.
But they do maintain them.
Okay.
But also depreciate it.
Yeah. All right, so this is an anti-SESD crowd, I get it.
No, I don't.
I'm not anti, I'm just, it's it's one of those things that S, again, we had these meetings, what, about two, three years ago with SESD and they. You know, they they came in and they're like, we've, you know, we save you people and all this, and I'm just like, no, you really don't.
When they wanted us to sign a fifty year contract, that's what it was. We we came in and said, we don't feel comfortable with a fifty year contract because we know. That things are going to change in this valley in the next fifty years, and that was a little bit of a concern at that time, and so. As we have progressed with them through the years, we of course appreciate the the service, we appreciate. Um all of the uh timely maintenance and and everything that goes into our citizens receiving their power. But we also saw that writing on the wall when when the lawsuit happened that was about, not about us, but about that west side of the valley. And that lawsuit with the other cities and how that was affecting us because those other cities were coming down on us and we're like, we're not SESD, we are a partner. And we we get that service, we have one board member, but we don't make the decisions for SESD. And so that's where. That whole discussion came and I think that um. We have to be, as they're, you know, Elk Ridge and Willand Hills are their biggest customers, and so I think we do have to be. Cognitive of of that um that dynamic that may be coming in the next twenty years to make sure that we're prepared.
Yeah, I mean, I.
If they, if something happens and we have to assume that uh to be our own power broker, if we are our own power broker, are we. Are we preparing ourselves so that when that time. Might be presented to us, that we're prepared and it's not just a, oh my gosh, what just happened, right?
Right, well, I mean, I I I think that we could go down that road at any time. I mean, it's just a matter of buying the infrastructure, so it's.
Yeah.
And making sure that we can maintain that, which I think is no small task, but you know.
No, it's not. Again, I don't think we're in a position to do that anytime in the near future, but I think I think we have to be.
Open.
Yeah, we have to have our eyes wide open and not just take. I don't know, take them for granted, it's not the right words, but. SESD provides a service. It's a commodity. As with any commodity, I can buy flour at Smith's or I can buy it at Costco or I can buy it at Macy's.
Right.
But it's still flour. Electricity is just electricity. And while I appreciate the fact that SESD provides it today. I would hope that their board, and which you're a member and that's the only reason that we're talking about this. Is thinking, what happens? When this entire valley is built out?
Yeah, no, I I I don't think there's any blindness to that reality. I mean, you you've got Payson, you've got Salem, you've got Spanish Fork, they're all. Uh very. Aggressively gobbling up all unincorporated areas around them, so I I, you know, but but then there are also cities that are seeking to incorporate that would utilize them, I mean. They were talking today that Spring Lake is looking at incorporating and, you know, that would be an option for them, so. I I, you know, I I I don't think that it's just blind wine. I I think that it's something that.
But it's gonna be really expensive.
Yeah, no, and I I think that there's.
More patchwork they try to be.
Right. Well, and it's gonna get expensive this summer, which was really the only one.
The recommendation, the the recommendation that I made to SESD two years ago was. You should be working with Spring at Salem, Payson and Spanish Fork on a clear transition plan. So that you're not fighting them overturning stuff over that you're actually planning for. It's just gonna happen.
Yeah.
Just plan for it.
Or we need a nice small nuclear plant that's by the water, you put it behind your house.
And everybody start running power for us.
Yes, I was actually, when I was at that meeting, I was thinking, cuz they're small, I mean, they're not quite that small, but uh. They're small, it would, it would be something where, you know, you have facilities here, that could be.
It's a very large percentage of Salem's budget. Comes from their electricity and stuff.
Yeah, no, I know, well, that's 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 the real incentive for these cities to bring it in-house is it's it's a revenue stream, so.
Big revenue stream. And I mean, if we're trying to be creative.
Yeah.
Nothing like it.
Sorry, Bert.
Here's the thing, but I I I, I mean, my first loyalty is with Willand Hills. But I I I, to me, there's some significant barriers to us ever assuming that role. Uh it it seems like they're significant.
There is. New job for you.
All right, tree, well, let's move on. Uh item fourteen, possible items for upcoming city council meetings.
We, I thought we were going to, um I I mentioned this before, that we would have a. Budget discussion every time, not just a, you know, update on the proposed budget, though, which is gonna work session, but actually something that had to do with our budget. So that we can have spot times where we're not necessarily voting on anything. But just throughout the year that we're discussing a particular line item or a particular department. Or something like that, so that our budget doesn't come down to its march. Let everybody dive into the whole hair thing and then. Then we have to wait, 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 and then sometime in May we get the revised version cuz we have to vote on it in June. But to have this ongoing discussion all the time, at least small portion of it on our on our work session. So that each year it's not just a big dive, we've already been discussing things, so that. I don't know, I just think that would be helpful. I, as I've talked to other cities, how they do it, and that's basically what they do, it's a year long process, they. They might have a budget retreat, but it's based on what they've discussed all year prior.
Right, and and I don't have any objection to that, and Chris and I talked about that. Um. The one thing I don't want city council meetings to be counted is. Every council meeting is a budget meeting where we're going through each expenditure. I I don't, I don't wanna do that and and so, I mean, if you have particular areas that you want to discuss, I mean, this can be. You can give me input on that and we can discuss it, but I mean. I don't see much point in me just randomly selecting one item for discussion every week. I think that if there's something that we can. Uh you know, that that that's an area that merits further discussion, then then let's get it on the agenda and I'm happy to do that. But you know, I I I don't wanna go through the whole budget every every council.
Oh, no, no, that's not, that's not what my intent was, it's just to say, okay, where are we? Because we get those updates, right? Sixty six percent has been spent on here. So what is, what is that sixty six percent and where we still need to go, or have we seen now that we're at forty five percent? Have we seen that we may need to adjust, not necessarily open the budget, but to say, you know, as we're looking forward. Um I just think that saving it all for the end is very, and a very emotional process because it's. Who has needs, who has wants, and we haven't necessarily collected the data other than percentages used throughout the year.
I think also sometimes it helps to just, cuz if we have a question and we don't have it on the agenda, you know, we can't discuss it.
Right, but you can bring it up as a potential agenda item. I mean, so if if there is a question or you can send Chris an email and ask him about it anytime too, so.
Can we get those questions answered next time for the that we asked about the March?
No, February.
Yeah, I think that's, those are February's, but yeah, Chris said you, he has those answered, he's just waiting to meet with the mayor and then he'll send them all to us.
Okay.
Well, so, yeah, it's 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 the, yeah, the the answers aren't related to. The um the budget that we're discussing, but.
Right, right.
I think Chris was wanting to touch with the twenty twenty two revision.
Right. Right.
And twenty twenty three.
Right.
And so those two items, so. Yeah, but I'm, he's got those questions answered.
We do need to have a public hearing on both of those.
Yeah.
In the next.
The next month, we have to have a public hearing on it.
Okay.
The first meeting in June usually is when we have a public.
No, it's the last meeting.
Well, we have to have it approved before the last meeting, so we have to.
We usually have one in May, a public meeting, and then you have one in June where you discuss it, and then the next one will.
Yeah, but but we usually have to have it because of the dates of when the state wants us to have the budget in. That our council meeting is usually like the day or two after, and so we usually have to take that vote. On the first, our first council meeting in June.
Okay.
So you just might wanna look at those dates to make sure that we have adequate time to send out those two public hearings.
Okay, uh Chris, well. I'm sure that you're cognizant of uh those deadlines and and we'll be able to meet them.
Yeah, what we should do is we should really have the um the budget hearing next week, our next council meeting. And then if nobody shows, then council can vote on it, but if somebody comes with some compelling changes, then you might want to. Hold it till the first week in June, but it'd be nice to get it done.
This morning.
It's seven days.
Oh, it's only seven days.
Uh state code. Ten dash. Uh ten dash five dash one oh eight. That changed in twenty twenty one.
Okay, so it's only seven days now?
It's seven days before the hearing.
We could put both of them on the next city agenda and um have twenty twenty two and. Uh twenty twenty three for public hearing, but you don't have to officially take a vote on it. I would recommend doing it if there's no big changes, but if there is, then we can postpone it till the vote until the June meeting, but it has to be voted on. And remember, still potentially voting on just a temporary budget depending on what you guys wanna do with taxes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do need to have those budgets though in hand before I post it.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty three was given out already, but I can report that again, not much has changed since the finance committee. Meeting and no more additional recommendations, but I'll be happy to send those to you. And the mayor and I are meeting on the twenty twenty-two budget. And soon as he gives his approval on that, then we'll move forward.
And does that give us adequate time, Julie?
As long as I have, by next Monday.
So this upcoming Monday?
Yes.
Okay, well, Chris, that is not gonna, because you and I are meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah.
We'll have to talk offline and and figure out a different time for that then.
Okay, that's great.
All right. Okay.
No, no pressure.
It's good to be.
Your hair looks a little grayer lately.
I I I can see myself aging in six months.
Changed jobs, you gotta.
Yeah.
I need part-time gig.
You call it a side hustle.
A little stressed, are you a little stressed there?
Yeah, I I I I guess you could say that.
Throw in a few lawsuits and we're, we're good.
Yeah, no, I know.
And a few more friends, yeah.
Well, I do, I guess that's fine. We do have to be ready.
So.
It's why you're red, bro.
Well, look at you, you used to be really dark haired before you started.
Yeah, I used to be a lot younger. Um, another thing that we, certainly this is not like an urgent thing, but we really ought to be doing codification periodically, probably every two years at a minimum.
Okay.
Just because as we pass ordinances, the new website is super helpful. So it's great that we list them and we have them on the new website. So it's really easy for people to read, but it still does require people to go to the codify document and then go through the ordinances that we passed to see if any changes have been made.
Yeah.
That's the way they have to do it.
David, actually, the last time it was codified was they updated it with the twenty twenty-one dash thirty ordinance. So it's been updated through twenty twenty-one. So now twenty twenty-two are the only ones that they'll do it, and then they'll do it each, at the end of each year.
That's what I was gonna.
So they'll update it at the end of each year, and then we take the, like, the twenty twenty-two ordinances will all go in a PDX zip file and then twenty twenty-three will follow underneath it. So if you look at the website.
Okay, so it's automatically being updated?
Yeah, at the end of each year.
End of year, which is great.
Yay.
So hopefully.
And that's good.
And those changes make it to our website, right?
Yeah, it's a link.
More importantly, yeah, they make it to the codifier's website. Because they host all of our code on the website that is searchable and everything.
Right. Okay, no.
Okay.
Good, good suggestion. Thank you. And thanks, Julie. Okay, well, with that, so we'll make a motion to adjourn this morning.
All right, it's just a work session, we don't have to make any motions.
Oh, we can just adjourn.
Yeah, we just.
We don't generally have a adjourn after a work session.
Don't we take a break?
Yeah, we take a little break.
You know, just take a break. Oh, all right, so we don't, all right, well, let's adjourn to a break.
You have.
Don't worry.
You have control over us, we can say whether we can have a break or not.
All right, let's reconvene at seven forty then. All right, let's resume. All the city council meetings are ordered. We'll have a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Kinnison, followed by an invitation by Councilmember Hilliard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are grateful for this wonderful nation that we pray for our leaders that that lead us, that they may be able to be guided by thee and listened to thee for the betterment of the citizens of our great country. We are also very grateful this time for our wonderful city and for the wonderful residents we have here, and for those that strive so hard to to help make our city even better. We're especially grateful for our volunteers. We're grateful for their sacrifice and service. We pray that they will be protected as they serve our great community. We're grateful for our staff and for our wonderful mayor. We're grateful for their sacrifices as well, for their families, for the time and dedication and love and passion they have for our city. We pray that that will bless them. We pray at this time that as we come together for the city council meeting, that that will guide us, that we'll be able to make the decisions, that will give us the most longevity and hopeless plan for our future, so that the city may be able to grow in accordance to thy will. And that we may be able to do what we need to for the best benefit to the residents here. We leave these, we leave these things, we say these things, and then when I send Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, public comments.
Public?
Ben?
Should've come prepared.
Yeah, no, it's a lot of pressure.
I know, I'm good, thanks.
And looks like nobody remotely. Okay, item sixteen, seventeen, second agenda is city council minutes for April twelve, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-six. All right, get a motion to approve segments.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Hilliard.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Lund. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item eighteen, ordinance amending city code eleven two one, eleven four nine, and eleven five ten. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the amendments as proposed.
Summoned.
Motion by Councilmember Malpich.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Pratt. All right, Councilmember Malpich.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison.
Yes.
Councilmember Lund.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item nineteen, ordinance amending ten two one definitions for yard, front, side, and rear. entertain a motion for adoption of that amendment.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Lund.
I'll second that.
And a second by Councilmember Kinnison. Councilmember Malpich.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison.
Yes.
Councilmember Lund.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item twenty, ordinance amending the title of the city development and construction standards. Okay, motion by Councilmember Pratt.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Hilliard. Councilmember Malpich.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison.
Yes.
Councilmember Lund.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item twenty-two, resolution approving.
Twenty-one.
Oh, oh, excuse me, yeah.
We just did twenty.
Okay, yeah, I checked, but I'm sure, thank you. Okay, item twenty-one, ordinance amending portions of city code titles four, eight, nine, ten, and eleven as proposed.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Pratt and second by Councilmember Malpich. Councilmember Malpich.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison.
Yes.
Councilmember Lund.
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, resolution approving March twenty twenty-two check dispersions.
Were we gonna table that?
Yeah, I thought we said in the work session we were tabled.
Okay, then item twenty-three, resolution appointing Earl Kinnison to the nine eleven special service district board.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hilliard.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Malpich. Resolution is not a roll call, right?
Correct.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're an aye of the door.
I think we need a speech.
That's true, yeah, I think I'm speech ready. Going privately to Ben. No, I think there'll be.
Okay, thank you for your willingness to serve. All right, well, that concludes the city council meeting open session. And I would like to propose that we enter into a closed session.
For what purpose?
For the purpose of discussing legal matters and also, what was the other one?
Individual one.
Yeah, item one, individuals' care and professional competence, physical or mental health.
I'll make a motion to enter into closed session.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Pratt.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Kinnison. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey. Well, then we move to a closed session.
So we're keeping you out.
No, it's fine.
Thanks, Ben, thanks for.
We're gonna talk about my professional.
Actually, we're worried about your physical health.
So when, legal first.
Yeah.
Just the interesting update, just one second.
Julie has.
Interesting update.
It's interesting, no, we.
Depending on what meeting they had earlier. Well, at least that.
Uh, can we get a motion to close?
I make a motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Lund to adjourn.
All in favor?
We don't have to have a second on a, a journey.
Yeah, all in favor.
Aye.
Long day here, guys.
Thank you, Julie.
There was a lot of hot air going.